Yeah, everybody's.
Good evening, everyone. It's 5:45 tonight. We'll be having an informational session. Our first topic will be the tax increment financing and abatement as development tools. And tonight we've got Lucy McMartin with City of Winona Community Development.
So, thank you, Mayor and members of council. I'll be starting by talking about tax increment financing, followed by Nick Larson, who will be talking about abatement. Then Carlos will follow with the second half of the meeting, which is about the proposed changes in car washes in residential areas. So, starting out with the tax increment financing, this is a tool that was created by the Minnesota State Legislature. And established cities like Winona do use tax increment and tax abatement as tools for economic development. So what that does is it takes the future tax revenue for a project, and those funds can be used to help finance some of the eligible expenses that I'll review in just a moment. I'd like to emphasize that the taxes on the existing parcel continues to be paid. Only the increase in tax is what is used for the TIF. That's such an important point. I guess I put it there twice. So, but the property taxes continue to be paid. It's the incremental value that is used. So there's two different ways that the city has used TIF in the past. One is you can sell bonds, and then that increment in the development project can be used to pay the bonds. A more conservative approach is called a pay-as-you-go, and that's where the developer fronts the cost. And we, as the increment is returned to us, pass that on to the developer. You know, Winona, like many other cities, we try to find ways to bring development, jobs, investment, and energy to the community. We have limited site availability. And I believe that the Port Authority has been very good stewards of public resources, being very careful when and how we use tax increment financing. Here's the list of the different types of districts there are. This is just a few. And we have used the Economic Development TIF, the Redevelopment TIF, and the Renewal and Renovation. So the types of expenses that can be reimbursed through a TIF include site acquisition, improvements, public utilities, or the infrastructure related to that development of sewer and water, administrative costs to a certain limit, and also, excuse me, administrative costs not to exceed 10% of the TIF. And then, of course, if you did issue bonds for a project, you can use the TIF to pay that bond off. So, TIF can help stimulate development. It can encourage different types of development. In the end, we all have to meet the statutory requirements. So we carefully consider the projects. We consult with our bond counsel and financial advisors before we proceed. And we use it to enhance the tax base and employment as required by statute. I should note, it does also create quite a few construction jobs, as some of these developments we're seeing do in fact have quite a few jobs. And I think we'll take some questions at the end. I wanted to show a picture here. This is the former WNC Printing Building, sustained just extensive fire damage on the interior of this building. And we were able to create a redevelopment tax increment district to help facilitate the redevelopment of this building. I'll now turn it over to Nick, who will talk about tax abatement.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tax abatement in context is more of a rebate to the property owner and to the developer, rather than exemption of taxes. Some of the TIF, the city share, the city portion of property taxes would still be paid in full on the pre-development value of that land. And what they're capturing is the post-development. And I'll go through a little example on a couple of slides here. Very important aspect about TIF and abatement for a benefit is that it does help spur development through public-private relationships, where that private development may not occur but for the use of TIF or abatement. Abatement, unlike TIF, does not have to meet the but-for test for statutory requirements. But as a staff level, we only feel it's appropriate that if public funds can be used for development, that there has to be some sort of financial gap there to be able to make that development off the ground. The other thing that it does is other developers, they do speak with each other. When they know communities like Winona do use TIF and abatement to spur development, they tell each other, and hopefully that does spin off development also to increase their economic and tax base. As an example for TIF, where property value, the city share of the portion right now, let's say, would be $1,200 annually. And the city provides $100,000 worth of abatement over a 10-year period for a $10.7 million project. After that project's completed, the property could have city share property taxes of $11,200. The developer, the property owner pays that entire amount to the county. We work with the county. And then the difference, the $10,000 from the $11,200 to the $1,200, that is rebated back to the property owner, to the developer, either when the 10-year period ends, or we hit that $100,000 mark that we have the agreement for. Whichever happens first, and after that point, the city collects its full share of those property taxes. Couple of benefits of also with abatement, once the development is done, as I said, it does increase our economic and tax base, where abatement can be used for affordable housing projects, attracting workforce or businesses, or our current businesses having an expansion project to add more jobs to the area. Most instances, we will see abatement being used because of extraordinary construction costs. And we definitely see that in this day and time with building materials being increased. But also things such as demolition, or if we have to do compact some soil. I mean, those extraordinary costs that create the financial gap for the development to get off the ground. An example that we'll have later this evening at the regular council meeting on your screen. This particular parcel's on Mankato Avenue. It's 602 Mankato. What is being proposed is a 41-unit multifamily affordable housing project. Last May, the city council did approve for tax abatement of right around $135,000 for this $10.7 million project. Its pre-development value on over two acres is just over $265,000, with the tax capacity, total tax capacity, which would include city, county, and the school district and the Port of 30, of just over $3,200 annually. Once this development is complete, per the county assessor's office, it will have a value of 4.5 million, which will increase its overall tax capacity of over $56,000 annually, which is going to be split also between the city, the county, the school district, and the Port Authority. Overall, with tax abatement, whatever the current property value is, the city still retains those revenues coming in. It's one that, once the abatement period is over, then we get to collect the full share of it. Okay, so with TIF and with abatement, some of the goals is with affordable housing, with the example that I just presented. The other component to it is that with affordable housing side of things, when we do have housing TIF involved or abatement, it usually goes inside with what's called housing tax credits, which are issued through Minnesota Housing. So with that particular tool by statute, for at least 35 years, that multifamily apartment complex would have restricted rents and incomes. So it's a development that serves our frontline workers, our manufacturers, teachers, nurses. Is nothing that we would have to do on a local level to make sure those rent income levels remain there. The state pretty much already takes care of that for us. Some of the studies and plans that the city has spent money on with consultants and staff time and community members being parts of task force would be our comprehensive plan from 2007. And the Mayor's Housing Task Force, from when the most recent housing study was released in 2016, Mayor's Housing Task Force at that time made a number of recommendations to council, one of them being to use a tax abatement and TIF for affordable housing projects. And that was also approved by council to use these tools on a case-by-case basis. With that, Lucy and I are open for any questions or comments in regards to use of TIF and/or abatement.
Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. This helps. I think I'm beginning to wrap my arms around this. What criteria are you using? If you can, if you can help me compare and contrast which projects you would use abatement versus TIF? I don't quite get that piece.
Usually, it's the larger, more complex projects that have a larger financial gap that we would use TIF for.
Okay, okay. Case-by-case basis. So you use that phrasing a moment ago. You know, if I were a developer, I could be concerned, gosh, you know, I'm not from town. I'm not connected. Maybe, maybe, maybe I'm the case that doesn't make it. Do we, do we have objective criteria that we're really applying? Or is it, is it a little more who you know? Or how does that work? Do we have a formula that helps us figure that out?
We do have some business subsidy guidelines. They are pretty broad. And that's why at a staff level, we review each project. And I would say these are just two of the tools. Many times, one of the state programs, like Minnesota Investment Fund or a redevelopment grant from the state, makes more sense. So we do have a broad criteria. And some cities have a very specific policy. We usually keep the TIF as a percentage of total development cost at under 10%. And it's on a need-as-needed basis, and it has to meet the statutory requirements. Those are quite strict.
But if I'm a developer, it's always needed.
Right, that's why we require their financials, gap analysis, et cetera.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have questions?
I do think council should keep in mind, we have, what, three TIF districts? There's an awful lot of development that's happened in this community that was not done with TIF. We try to use TIF as sort of our last weapon that we can yield to make a project go, that last resource. So Lucy and her staff really try to find other ways to accomplish the need of the developer. And, you know, quite frankly, we're in, we're in a bit of a, you know, war with other communities over who gets to go where. And so some communities, they've got scores of TIF districts. I would argue that's not a real sustainable plan to go forward. So I think there's been a really good balance here. And there's probably been some projects that have walked away because we said it really doesn't meet that criteria. If it takes that kind of subsidy to make the project go, it's probably not that good of a project to begin with.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Nick.
Mayor, council, one thing I would like to add with TIF and abatement, especially when it pertains to affordable housing projects, when state tools are involved, such as housing tax credits, they're very competitive programs. So the development that we presented later this evening, they went through two rounds of funding for an allocation of housing tax credits from the state. Part of the scoring criteria from the state is having local support on the financial front. And there is a scoring, scoring rubric for how Minnesota Housing looks at that and views how strong a developer's application is. But for these affordable housing projects, in most cases, it does require local support on a financial level.
Thank you, Nick. Any other questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd have one more. If I could. Could, could abatement or TIF be used, for example, in a place where a developer wants to come in? Yeah, I'd like to come in, but, gosh, I just found out this parcel I really want to buy and develop has pollution on it. And it's going to cost me, you know, $300,000 to clean up the mess. Is that an applicable use of abatement or TIF?
Yes, and that's a common one, either soil conditions themselves or environmental issues. And the tax increment can be used and abatement to help with those types of challenging costs.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I'd like to add on that, a preferred method for staff is applying to Minnesota DED for demolition or cleanup grants and trying to use those financial resources before we start looking at using our local resources.
All right, good, fair enough. Can I go one more?
Yeah.
So when, when we've got abatement, we've got three taxing authorities, county, city, and, oh, four, port, county, city, and school district, right?
But the port, when it comes to abatement, the port portion and the state portion of the property taxes is removed. So with abatement by statute, you'd only be looking at city, school district, and the county.
And each one of them would have to sign off?
Correct, or decline. And that changes the rules a little bit if the decline of wanting to participate. I'd be more than happy to jump in the weeds with you if you'd like to on all those little.
We may do that someday. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, Lucy, or Nick, or whoever, is there a certain amount of cap put on as to how much TIF or tax abatement we can do? And if there is, are we close to that cap?
On abatement, there is a cap. It's.
10% of the total capacity.
Or 200,000. Yeah, so we're not close at all. There's also requirements for TIF to stay within certain amounts. I don't know of a city our size who has a lower percentage of their tax capacity. In TIF, we are under 1%.
Thank you for that info.
Thanks for the question, George. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we're going to move on. Thanks, Nick and Lucy. Appreciate it. We're going to move on to Carlos regarding the proposed zoning code amendments related to car wash businesses.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Carlos Espinoza, City Planner here. I'm just going to pull up a PowerPoint briefly.
I know there will be some members of the public who want to speak tonight. We'll wait till Carlos is done. We'll take care of council comments, and then we'll make sure to get you in. I will ask that we keep the comments brief and to the point, right around two or three minutes tops. Thank you.
So again, Mayor and Council, the topic of the second portion of this pre-council is a proposed car wash ordinance. And staff's intent with this item is to bring it forward for discussion purposes tonight, prior to potentially bringing it to a future council meeting. So I have a brief presentation. And then, as Mayor mentioned, there are some other interested parties who would like to speak regarding the ordinance. The proposed car wash ordinance is being brought forward at this time because car washes create a lot of noise, not just onsite but off-site as well. Overall, this is not as much of an issue if it's in a commercial area. But if there's residential dwellings nearby, it can become an issue, especially if the car washes are operating in the evening or overnight. Normal background noise in the city is 50 to 55 decibels. So that's kind of in the core area of Winona, north of Highway 61. However, a car wash operation during its dry cycle has about 70 to 72 decibels of noise that is created. And so that's similar to a vacuum being operated at nine feet away from you. So you can picture being in your house and being in your living room. Somebody turns on the vacuum, does some vacuuming during the day, probably not a big deal. But then you sit down and go to dinner, and somebody turns on the vacuum. Might be an issue. Similarly, somebody vacuuming in the room next to you when you're trying to sleep overnight. So really, that's what we're trying to address here, the issue with noise being created that disturbs the peace of the public. So Winona City Code currently does not address car wash operations next to residential areas. And thus, the proposed ordinance is the following. Overhead vehicle exit doors at car wash facilities within 150 feet of residential property shall be closed between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM when vehicle washing or drying equipment is in use, except when a vehicle is exiting the facility and driving through a dryer system. Now, there's a lot there, so I'll walk through really the four components to the ordinance in the following slides. The first is that the ordinance would only apply to car wash facilities within 150 feet of a residential property. Of course, there's car washes throughout the city of Winona, but there are only four of them within a half a block of a residential property. Those four washes are the Quick Trip on Broadway and Mankato, the Gilmore Avenue Car Wash in Clark's Lane, the Severson Oil Car Wash on Highway 61 and West Service Drive, and finally, the Easy Car Wash next to Mango's and Auto Zone off of Highway 14. The second component of the proposed ordinance is that it only applies to overhead exit doors between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So thus, the ordinance would apply when nearby neighbors at residential properties are generally at home, outside in their yard, or during sleeping hours. This would mean that the doors can be opened during the day, during daytime business hours until 5:00 PM. The third component is that the ordinance would only apply when vehicle washing or drying equipment is in use. This means that doors can be open when cars are not being washed and no noise is being created. Speaking with car wash operators in the city during development of this proposed ordinance, they did note that it is important to them to have the door open, especially during the summer, to signify that the wash is open for business. And finally, there's an exception that says that the doors have to be closed except when a vehicle is exiting the facility and driving through a dryer system. And this is in there because most washes have what's called an off-board drying system. So you can picture what happens is you drive your car into the building or into the facility. The car wash system turns on, goes through the wash cycle. And while you're still in the building, after the wash cycle is complete, the exit door opens, the dryer turns on, and then you drive your car slowly out of the exit door. In this situation, the exit door cannot be closed. But what the ordinance would require is the door to be closed during the wash cycle. So you would still eliminate the noise coming from the wash cycle, even though the door cannot be closed during the drying period. Overall, in conclusion, the ordinance is attempting to address noise issues without being overly burdensome on car wash operations. And staff feels that the proposed ordinance is currently written as a good compromise, and the regulations are reasonable. They may not represent exactly what each party involved in this would like, but rather, it's somewhere in the middle. So staff feels that it is a good potential compromise to help alleviate the issues with noise that have been created. Thank you.
Does any, any council members have any questions?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Now, is, this is not a public hearing tonight, is it? Because I've had people call me about this issue today. And I said, is my understanding is it's a pre-council meeting for the council to get updated on this. I did not know that we were going to allow people to speak.
That's a good question, George. As far as I know, I was told that we were going to have a few people speaking tonight from the public.
Okay.
My question is, would be all parties that are involved in this aware of that?
That's correct. All of the car wash operators that would be affected by this ordinance have been notified of this pre-council meeting. And they have the Zoom link to, in order to participate, as well as some of the residents that are being impacted by the noise being created from the car wash facilities.
How many residents are we talking about here?
In this case, they're primarily a number of properties of a Clark's Lane adjacent to the Gilmore Avenue Car Wash.
Okay, how many properties? I mean, is it five, 10, 3, 1?
Two on the line right now.
Two.
And if they speak, they may be able to elaborate as to the issues that are happening in that area.
Okay.
Mayor, this is Pam. I have a question.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yeah, I'm, I'm interested to find out if, if the car washes are new or if they are old established businesses. Also, the technology that they use, is that old established technology? Or do we have something new going on?
And I can answer that. Councilmember Iden, most of the car washes have been in their locations for a number of years. But there have been changes in terms of operating hours and equipment that have been introduced. In particular, operating hours 24/7, where car washes are occurring in the middle of the night. And then operating equipment where car wash doors are being opened and remain open during the night when the facility can be closed and can close the doors. So those are the two things that are new, the 24/7 operation, as well as new improvements that allow doors to be open and shut at all hours of the day.
I have, I have one more question. You mentioned that there, that this business caused noise onsite and off-site. What did you mean by off-site?
What I mean by off-site is adjacent properties. So you can hear the noise not just on the property, but across the street from the property at your house or at a residential dwelling.
Got it. Thank you.
Mayor, Michelle, may I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. Carlos, so if I understand correctly, you did decibel studies around town at various sites. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And how many of the ones that we're specifically targeting tonight violated the decibel levels? And how many of them were given the opportunity to correct that problem prior to this ordinance?
So all of them would have violated the ordinance requirements or the MPCA requirements for the reception of noise from a nearby residential area.
Excuse me, Carlos.
Mayor, man.
Is that the, the proposed ordinance decimal or the state or city decimal that's currently on the books?
That's the one that's currently on the books right now.
So you're saying state, but what about our city decibel level?
The city decibel level references the state decibel level, so we go by what the state says.
What is the state decibel level?
The state decibel level that is recommended at this area, 65 decibels. I have a slide here that I can show to help answer this question.
Michelle, we'll let you finish up here.
Oh, thank you. So Carlos, if I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like where they're really violating is in the dry cycle, which we can't really correct because the doors usually have to be open during that cycle. So, but we're, but we're, putting this ordinance aside for a minute, I think as part of our normal city ordinance or statutes, or when there's a complaint, however many, the businesses are given the opportunity to try to correct or mitigate the problem. You know, I mean, I get these businesses have been here for a long time. They've operated the same businesses in the same locations for a long time. I get that sometimes upgrades or neighborhood issues arise. But it's not like, I mean, I'm all for new ordinances that come in just to regulate new businesses moving into a residential area. But if I'm correct, every one of these businesses is in a business district. So I just want to make sure that when we're looking at this, we're not targeting these businesses specifically in a situation where they can't control that. And they've been there 28, 15, 40 years. And now we want to regulate how they do business. I'm not saying something might not be appropriate. But I want to know, did any of these businesses get approached with trying to correct the decibel levels before going for an ordinance? And, and did they make those effort? Did they accomplish anything? That's what I'm trying to understand first.
Sure. And yes, we did work with one of the businesses to try and reduce the number of decibel readings. And there were some improvements, but even with the improvements, they're still exceeding the state requirement. So it's still an issue. They're still exceeding the regulations. And there is the equipment to close the door when it should be closed, which is in the evenings and at night. They're just choosing not to do it. And that's really the issue here, where if you have the ability to use your equipment to essentially be a good neighbor and keep the noise to a minimum, that's really what we're trying to get at with this ordinance here, is to close the doors, which has a significant. which has a significant, uh, impact on the amount of noise that's being created. And I have it on my slide here. So car wash noise details, um, it's not, we typically measured in decibels, so D B's. No car wash operating, as I mentioned earlier on in the presentation, fifty to fifty-five decibels in the city of Winona, which is a quiet urban daytime noise level. The noise, however, that's created with the door open, measured from a hundred feet away, and this is, uh, and multiple different car washes throughout the city, is sixty-four to sixty-six decibels during the dry cycle and, or I'm sorry, during the wash cycle and seventy to seventy-two decibels during the dry cycle.
Excuse me, Carlos, I, I just have a quick question. Maybe I heard you incorrectly earlier, Mayor. Uh, was it one hundred and fifty feet or a hundred feet? Because earlier I wrote down the note one fifty feet.
Sure. And I have another slide here that'll address that.
Okay, I just want to make sure I didn't. Okay, thank you.
So what I'm getting at here is that if you're less than a hundred and fifty feet away from a, uh, car wash operation, that operations are creating noise in exceedance of state standards when the doors are open. So the state standard is sixty-five decibels. During the wash cycle, it's about right at that state level at a hundred feet away, sixty-four to sixty-six decibels. However, when the dry cycle kicks on, you're looking at seventy to seventy-two decibels, which is significantly louder.
Okay, so, excuse me, so it's seventy, a- and that's at a hundred feet away or at one fifty feet away?
That's at a hundred.
According to the state.
Yep.
Okay.
Excuse me, could you please announce who is speaking? Some people are just butting in and I'm getting confused.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That was Aaron Rupinski speaking to Luke.
So Carlos, just to finish that, my, my question here, um.
Yep.
So we can't really correct the seventy or seventy-two, though, because the doors open. I'm guessing this is really just about one car wash, because if it was about all four of them, you would have had all four of them address the decibel levels. I'm guessing we got complaints from one neighborhood about one car wash. Is that correct? And the other three are, are fit within the parameters of the ordinance you're suggesting, but we didn't ask them to correct decibel levels or ask them about changing the way that they operate prior to this. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct that we only received complaints from one, uh, area related to one car wash.
Okay.
The issue is being created across the city. So the car washes make the same amount of noise across the city. So there's an issue, uh, at all these different locations, what, regardless of if we've received a complaint or not. At these different locations, the amount of noise that's being created is in exceedance of M P C A noise standards. So, you know, maybe people in those areas are a little bit more accustomed to the noise or the car washes are a little bit further away or not operating in the middle of the night.
Right.
But in any case, the reason we're bringing this forward is because it's a issue across the city, not just with one. Although we've only received complaints related to one car wash facility.
I, I just have one more comment that I'm hoping you can kind of address. I'm a little uncomfortable with introducing ordinances to affect, s- s- you know, businesses that have been around for an extended period of time doing the same business. I mean, in my eleven-plus years on council, this has happened with the sand mine that has been there over a hundred years. It's happened with SciTech. It happens with the railroad. It happens with the truck routes. It seems like people buy in a neighborhood next to an industrial center or next to the railroad or next to a sand mine or next to a car wash. And then we are trying to address the community issues by making ordinances on an established business. It makes me a little uncomfortable. So how would you address that? Because where I'm coming from, I'm looking at what really should have been, and I agree with you, it sounds like there's a little, uh, neighborhood issue here that should have been dealt with in a much more respectful way. I mean, y- you should want to be a good neighbor. Um, but I, I do feel, I mean, I'm anxious to hear from all of the parties because I, I haven't yet, other than a few emails. I, I'm a little uncomfortable with, uh, you know, affecting their businesses, because I don't really understand the car wash business. But I do know that if the doors open and the real issue is the seventy-two decibel level, we're not going to correct that for these individuals, because the door is going to be open during that portion of their car wash. So I'm not sure I understand how this is meant to, to help. Um, if we, if the doors open, that decibel level is always going to be there. But, but maybe you can just address those two things for me, and then I, I'm, I'm done. I apologize for taking so long.
Are you, Phil?
Okay, I, this is Pam. I do have another question related to that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Pam.
Did you say, uh, that the, it is possible for the facilities to close the doors, but some of them are not?
Yes, it is possible to close the doors within the current operating capacity of the equipment. Um, but they're not being closed. Um, and so that's really what we're trying to get at is if you can close the doors, you should close the doors, uh, especially after five o'clock and overnight.
Thank you. That does seem like being a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Steve.
Steve here, uh, Carlos, thank you. See, if, if I could just kind of drill down so I can get clarity here and, and, uh, thank you for helping us unpack this. So you've, you've got some car washes that have the, the, uh, the, 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 the dryer blowers that I think mounted on the wall, and, and they're going to require, even in the middle of the night, they're going to require that the, that the, that the door be open. So as that car exits, e- even at three in the morning, that blower goes off, it's even should this ordinance be adopted, that that, that car wash would still be out of compliance then, right?
Right.
Okay, so, but, and, and is it the case that there's one car wash in town that has an, an onboard system that is, is, is drying that car? And so, so your, your, this ordinance is, would really compel that one car wash to, to close its doors during this, this period that, that would be mandated if we adopt the ordinance.
That's correct.
So really, this, this targets one facility.
The effect is on, uh, one facility closing their doors, but it applies to all the facilities. Um, the only, the difference is that all the facilities have to close their door during the wash cycle. They can't close their door during the dry cycle, but they can close it during the wash cycle. So, yes, it's not the noisiest part of the wash, but it still is a relatively noisy, um, situation that's being created. And so what we're trying to do overall is lower the amount of overall noise that is impacting adjacent residential properties, not just in one location, but in multiple locations. Will it have a greater effect in one location than in other locations? Yes, but it will help all of the, uh, properties that are adjacent to the four, uh, car wash facilities that would be targeted in this ordinance.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Eileen here.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Question. Um, I'm just wondering, uh, since we're apparently talking about one, uh, business in particular, what the effect on their ability to do business this would have? If, if, I'm just concerned that I, I, I had the same question, uh, Councilwoman Alexander had regarding if you're opening the doors anyway at the noisiest part, then the ordinance seems a bit like a moot point. Um, or, or like it doesn't really do anything about the noisiest part of the process, but also, um, if they are doing the majority of their business at night and perhaps servicing, you know, uh, late shift workers. I, I just, I'm concerned about placing an undue burden on the business owner.
Thank you, Eileen. Okay, we've got literally just a few minutes here. Uh, let's see if we can get, um, one of the business owners to speak. Is there someone who wishes to speak to the council tonight?
This is Tiffany Schindeldecker. I am, uh, one of the owners of the one proposed car wash.
Hi, Tiffany.
So thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm going to make it super quick, um, just kind of addressing some of the council people's questions regarding, um, the noise, noisiest versus quiet. Um, as a car wash owner, I've been doing this for a lot of years. We have one, we own four automatic car washes and one of the four this ordinance will, um, apply to, so to speak. I mean, yes, I understand what Carlos is saying. It would require us to close the doors during the quieter portions, which is very, very quiet and then would be allowed to open, except for the one location um, during the noisiest part of the cycle, um, the wash-dry cycle. So yes, to clarify those questions from an owner's perspective, absolutely. It, I also, my only, my quick second point is I feel like five o'clock is still working hours. Um, if we do need an ordinance for this, I would encourage, uh, a little bit later when we look at, um, state, city, um, noise, timing. Um, generally, the overnight hours of ten P M to seven A M are what's addressed as lower decibel requirements. So just asking you to keep that in mind again.
Tiffany, this is Mayor Sherman. I have a real quick question. Do you have kind of a peak hours that your business, uh, experiences?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, yes, I'm sure we do. Unfortunately, I don't have any statistics in front of me. Obviously, working, uh, daylight hours, I would say, are more peak than the overnight. Although we do have, um, three of our four washes are available on a twenty-four-seven basis. So there is activity in the evening, although.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, does any council members have questions?
Uh, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
I see, or Carlos, where you mentioned, uh, the four businesses, but only, uh, one that really has, uh, that they have the concern with tonight, I would just recommend that, uh, you know, instead of going through all these ordinance changes and everything else, is I would just simply have the neighborhood or the neighbor, whoever it may be, meet with the business owner and try to come to a remedy on your own for this. And if for some odd reason, something cannot be done, then it could come back, come, come back to the council, then the council will make one. But I would think if we're just looking at one, let them try to work it out. Thank you.
Thanks, George. All right, we've got four minutes before the council meeting. Does anyone else want to speak real quick? I'll give you two minutes.
Uh, Mayor Aaron here. I just want to say I did, uh, receive some emails on this. I think everyone else did and read, um, through the emails a few times. Took some notes and read through them again and stuff. Um, I agree with George on this. I think if we could help the two parties involved come together and come up with some sort of mutual decision, I myself, much like Michelle Alexander, I, I'm not really for proposing an ordinance that's going to affect, um, multiple businesses in town. And I've been contacted by two of the businesses and they are against this also. Um, it'd be nice if we could just come together and, and i- if we need to assist them in some way, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron.
This is Ryan Roberts on behalf of Quick Trip.
Go ahead.
We are within a hundred and fifty feet of residential. I did work with Carlos, um, kind of through this whole process and appreciate that opportunity, Carlos, and, uh, to the full council tonight. Um, one thing I did want to mention with this is we had a, we had a, uh, sound study done um, late last year, twenty-twenty, with one of the gentlemen that's involved with the Minnesota Sound Ordinance, uh, writing. I can share that information. Some of the decibel readings Carlos had, I'm not sure who did that, but we hired somebody that's in that field to do it. And the decibel levels I have, I can share the report. I'm willing to do that with the mayor, whoever would like it. Um, I did share it with Carlos. I just want to say on behalf of, um, Quick Trip, the five o'clock shutting the doors things, we do it in the winter. You know, the, the bay doors are closed anyways, but in the summer, um, you know, we like to keep it open. As I said to Carlos, it turns into a science experiment. You start closing the doors and you don't get, uh, air movement through there. You get algae growth and all of those things, but that's a whole different subject. I just want to say on our behalf, uh, we do our best to comply with this. The, the fact that is being maybe a little bit overlooked is the noise is from the dryers and ours are offboard right by the exit door. So the door is going to be open at the noisiest part of it. The only thing we could do is put onboard dryers on at a very cost, uh, very high cost to Quick Trip. So I just wanted to point that out and I'll, uh, let somebody else speak.
All right, thanks, Ryan. We're going to actually cut it short right now, so I apologize if anyone wasn't able to speak. I will ask that you either email or call the council and, uh.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I just say one thing? This is Tom Conway. I live across the street from the Gilmore Avenue Car Wash.
Go ahead, Tom.
We've tried for two years to make an accommodative, accommodative, uh, arrangement with our neighbors. Uh, his response was to go from having the doors closed at night to leaving them open all night. I hear the car wash go off all night. I have, uh, new thermal pane windows in my house. My house is well insulated, and in my bedroom, which is in the front of my house, I hear the car wash all night long. If I am sitting in my backyard, I'm in my favorite room in my house and my sun porch, we have to pause our conversation while the blower is going off. Any reasonable person could come to my home and stand in my yard and hear that thing and judge for yourself how noisy it is. I, this is a new addition to the Gilmore Avenue Car Wash. We've lived here since nineteen ninety-eight. I'm not new to the neighborhood. I'm not anti-car wash. I'm not anti-Schindle Deckers. All I would like is a little reasonable peace and quiet in my home and in my yard so that I don't, but I can have a normal existence. I believe that the noise generated by the car wash is going to, uh, devalue my property if I choose to sell it. And I believe that it's so easily remedied simply by closing the door that it's simply ridiculous not to have him close the door so that I don't have to hear it all hours of the night. I don't think I'm being unreasonable. I serve on the Board of Adjustment. I have to deal with situations like this where businesses on fringe zoning areas, uh, have to be accommodative to the surrounding neighborhood. And it's such a small gesture to make him close the door that I just can't believe that we can't get it done. And Carlos has been working diligently trying to figure this out. I've approached the owners of the Gilmore Avenue Car Wash a number of times. I've, uh, been met with just a flat-out no, I don't care, and that's where it's at. So we've tried a lot of avenues and this hasn't worked. That's why we're here. It's been two years now. That's why we're here proposing an ordinance. That's where we're at.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Come to my home and listen for yourself. It's re-
Very good. Thanks, Tom. Appreciate the input. All right, we do have to start the city council meeting. It is six thirty-two P M, and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we'll recite the pledge of allegiance.
By the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota Statutes thirteen D point zero-two-one in response to the COVID-nineteen emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call. So each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak so you are easily identified. Tonight, I've got a couple of comments. First, I would, the city wishes to recognize the service of street maintenance worker, Senior Bill Polowski, who retired on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Bill served for over twenty-three years in the street department, beginning his career as a straight, street maintenance worker on September second, nineteen ninety-seven. Right from the start of his career with the city, Bill could operate most of the street department equipment. With his carpentry and concrete background, Bill could repair anything he put his mind to. He took pride in his work and wanted things done right the first time. I can appreciate that, Bill. Good job. Uh, Bill repaired many storm sewer catch basins over his years and helped pour thousands of feet of concrete to replace curb and gutter throughout the city. During the mow, mowing season, Bill spent many hours on a Bobcat compact track loader with more attachment, maintaining the grassy slopes of the city flood dyke. The city appreciates Bill Polowski's twenty-three years of service, and we wish him a long, healthy, and happy retirement. Tonight, I also have a proclamation. Whereas all people have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment, as well as economic growth and opportunity. And whereas trees provide many ecological and human benefits that are being dem- And whereas trees provide many ecological and human benefits that are being diminished by changing temperatures and precipitation, more extreme weather events and increasing pressure from pests, diseases and invasive species. And whereas all of us as caretakers of our planet have an obligation to work toward lessening our environmental footprint. And whereas all of us can help build resilient communities and reduce the negative impacts of climate change by planting and caring for trees and by using wood products to store carbon into the future. And whereas the city of Winona participates in the Green Step, Green Step Cities Program and Tree City USA Program to better achieve our environmental goals and obligations. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Scott Sherman, hereby proclaim Thursday, April 22nd, Winona Earth Day and Friday, April 30th, as Arbor Day in the city of Minnesota. That's all I've got for tonight. City Manager Steve, sorry, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to welcome home the 2nd Battalion 135th Infantry from their service in the Horn of Africa for the last year. That includes Charlie Company who drills in Winona and my son Dan, who has been gone for a year. And I'd like to ask Brian DeFrang, who's got a statement he'd like to make regarding the sidewalk ADA issue along Broadway. Brian, are you on? Is Brian on?
Does he need to be unmuted?
Nope. Okay, well, Brian was able to secure funding for the ADA project along Broadway. I'll have him update council. We asked him to be here, but I'll make sure he does it at the next meeting to talk about the scope of the project. You know, again, we still have to go up for bids and you know, we'll see when the project could start, probably towards the end of the summer.
So this year, Steve?
Correct. Again, unless we get unfavorable bidding, but it's a big enough project, we think we'll be able to attract some good.
Good, thanks.
Good contractors. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great news. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Members of the city council who are either present in the city council chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Your statement.
Reminder that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council. And I have given you permission to speak. Also, a reminder to the council that a roll call vote will be taken on each motion.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, item 3.1 is an appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Joseph Hughes.
I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve that appointment.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.2 are massage therapy licenses for Kelsey Carlson doing business as River Valley Wellness.
I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve that, I guess, massage therapist.
I, Aaron, second that.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Aaron. Any discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
It's good to see here these massage therapy license, they're springing up here every week at our meeting. So I don't know if it's a good business or not, but you're not afraid to get involved in it. Good to see it.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.3 is a craft beer tour agreement with Leighton Enterprises. And we have both Pam Simon and another person from Leighton on the line. If you have questions.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve a license agreement and authorize administration to execute.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion or questions?
Is this gonna, Mayor Aaron here, is this going to be down to levy then?
I believe that's the case, yeah.
How does this interact with Great River Shakespeare Festival? They figured that out and is that different timeframe?
I'll let the people from Leighton explain. Are they on this evening?
Pam, is that a different timeframe than the Great River Shakespeare Festival?
They will, I'll let Jim Alguer, our general manager, answer.
Okay. Hi, Jim. Go ahead, please.
Jim Alguer, General Manager of Leighton Broadcasting, here in Winona. Yes, and actually, if you go to the next petition, we are working with the Great River Shakespeare Festival for, with the craft beer tour this year. So we've worked out everything with, with them.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden. Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.4 is a request for a temporary wine and beer license for the Great River Shakespeare Fest to host the craft beer tour.
I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve that request.
George will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle and a second by George. Any discussion? Any questions?
Mayor Eileen here, just that.
Go ahead, Eileen.
I'll abstain from this one.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion?
I, Mayor Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I'm just so excited to see things happening again after 2020. So this is, it's fun to see these on the agenda again. That's all I want to say.
Absolutely. Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Abstain.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.5 is a request for the St. Martin Strawberry Festival in Sinclair Park.
I, Michelle, I move approval for that request.
I, Aaron, second that.
We have a motion by Michelle and then Aaron just barely beat Eileen for the second. So any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.6 is the walk to end Alzheimer's street closure request.
I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve that request.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.7 is a street closure request for Sloppy Joe's.
You're to approve that street closure.
I'll second, Alexander.
We have a motion by George, a second by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.8 is a request from the Winona Nursing Club to hold a penning ceremony at the Band Shell.
I, Michelle.
Mayor, Aaron.
Move that request.
Aaron would second that then.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
Mayor. Go ahead, Steve. We'd be remiss to not thank the, the folks from Winona, their nursing students for all the help that they've given us down at the East Rec and elsewhere in the community to administer the COVID shots. So I have hardly, was joking with the president of Winona State that he should, we should deny this and tell them that they all have to stay on through the summer to keep helping us. But I know they're, they're chomping at the bit to get started on their careers, but they got it, they got a really good start as far as I'm concerned for all the help that they gave us.
Absolutely. Great point. Thank you, Steve, for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.9 is a request for the Main Street Touch a Truck Parade. And I believe Ben Strand is on the line.
I, Michelle Alexander, move approval for this unique touch a truck parade.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.10 is the Chamber of Commerce sign request for the Touch a Truck event.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve their request.
I, Aaron, will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.11 is a request for amendment to the truck route at Third and Ben Street.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve this request.
George will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from George. Any discussion?
Mayor, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I want to thank Brian and all the city staff. I've gotten calls for years from Harvester and other streets down there. And I think because there was no designated or clear path for trucks to take when making their deliveries at that location, especially as many of them were out of, out of state or out of town, they would take routes that they shouldn't have. And I think this is going to go a long way to correcting that problem, not only for the police department, who, who probably fields quite a few calls about this issue, but also for the neighborhoods over there. So there's a clear idea of where trucks are supposed to be and where they're, they're not supposed to be. So I think this is a great solution.
That's a good point. Thank you, Michelle. Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Eileen, I'll get you in a second. Go ahead, George.
Uh, and hopefully as things move along that we will see a lot less truck traffic in that area as well too, so.
Thank you, George. Go ahead, Eileen.
I was just going to echo what Michelle said and, and say that I will be very happy that this is a solution for the residents over there and hopefully we'll make the truck traffic a little bit smoother and less disruptive to the residents there.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eileen. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.12 is the Heroes Among Us Monument Sign Request.
I, Michelle Alexander, move approval for this request.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.13, a request for off-site permit for lawful gambling for the Redmond Club.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the gambling permit.
Aaron will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would imagine George here, this must be for their picnic. I would imagine, Monica?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden. Ayden. Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the Gipsoil Pelotize Subordination in the Intercreditor Agreement.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the document. And I commend Monica on getting all of that out without stuttering.
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for whoever can answer it. So just so I understand here, we have, we have, is this a new, a new entity or is this a refinance? Help me understand this. I read through this and I didn't quite get it.
It is a refinance. So when the original loans were made back in 2015, both the Port Authority and cities subordinated our position to the senior lender. And basically they're switching senior lenders. So we're being asked to subordinate again, which is often the case when we're part of a financing package.
It's just paperwork.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Last week, Thursday, the Port Authority Commissioners gave unanimous approval to this request.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden. Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3.2 is the Waters Edge Apartments Tax Abatement Agreement.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the tax abatement agreement and accept the two attachments of the resolution and the agreement itself.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Oh, George, I'm sorry, George, go ahead.
When do, when do we plan on seeing any activity there, Lucy?
I'll address.
Go ahead, Nick.
Mayor and council. The game plan moving forward is to close in the property mid to end July of this year and then to commence construction right away and hopefully be done with construction next summer, next fall of 2022.
Do we see, of course, it might be too early to ask, but do we see any, I'm used to word confusion as they begin the roundabout procedures in that area, which I understand, and that, and this is all subject to change, but that would be the first one that would be going in.
Mayor and council, speaking with Brian DeFrang, Director of Public Works, and we have been in communication with the developer that we don't, we don't feel an issue with the project, the roundabout project in conjunction with the Waters Edge Apartment Complex project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 3, item 5.3, reduced liquor license fees for 2021.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the reduced liquor license fees for 2021.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, if I could
Please.
comment briefly. Certainly, if we can give back 10%, which is a, a small amount for the city, I think I read it was $12,500 to many of our businesses that were greatly affected by, by the pandemic. This is a, a small gesture that we can do to help them out. I don't think this is going to make or break anybody's business, but it certainly is a gesture to, to, to try to help out. So I, I, I do hope we adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
I want to commend. I want to commend, uh, city administration and Monica for, uh, bringing this forward, and, uh, it certainly, yes, will be a help to many of, especially the small businesses. It will certainly help them out.
Excellent point. Thanks, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Item five point four is the amendment to the right-of-way ordinance and small cell wireless facilities aesthetics policy, and there is an ordinance and a resolution, and we are looking for two separate motions.
Well, I would make a motion to, uh, introduce the proposed ordinance or amend the proposed ordinance of chapter sixty-six.
Eileen will second that.
Hey, we have a motion by Michelle and a second by Eileen. We also need a second, is it, second motion, is that correct?
Oh, I will vote on the first one.
Okay, very good. Any discussion?
Um, Mayor Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, I just want to thank staff for staying on top of this. I know when we first introduced this concept, we didn't really know what to expect or what they would look like or where they would place them. So I really appreciated the thoroughness of this um, agenda item with pictures and graphs and descriptions, and, um, I just think it's a really nice way to try to work within the system we're handed so that people are, uh, homeowners don't have to have this sitting in front of their front window. I'm, uh, really pleased to see that we've come up with a way to work with the community and with the small cell that we're, you know, forced to work with. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then I would make a motion to accept the attached resolution, um, as well.
Mayor Erin here would.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Erin. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point five is an amendment to chapter twenty-five point twenty-two Trees.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Eileen will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Um, Mayor Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Um, John Howard and staff, again, thank you so much for clarifying for people what we're trying to accomplish in our public right-of-way in our street alleys or whatever it is that we're looking to try to get a diversified population in our community. I think this will help a lot if we have, um, guidelines and um, something to work within as a, as an individual who's interested in what trees to plant. I think this is kind of a great way to give them starting ground on, on what we're trying to accomplish inside of our city. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other comments or discussion?
Uh, this is Pam. I would just like to comment that this is a great update to our ordinances.
Very good. Thank you, Pam. Any other discussion? Steve has a comment.
I still have a slight objection to the fact that John won't let any Catalpa trees be planted in the right-of-way, but I guess that's give and take, right?
John, would you like to comment?
Uh, I, I, I tried, Mr. City Manager, but, uh, there's objections.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander. Alexander.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item five point six is the comprehensive plan RFP review and approval.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to proceed with RFP and the plan outlined in our agenda packet.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And item five point seven is the plat review for the Quick Trip Plat at one zero five eight Homer Road.
George moves to motion to approve the attached resolution.
And Erin will second that.
Motion by George, second by Erin. Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, this is Pam. I do.
Go ahead, Pam.
Question. Uh, when this is sent out, uh, to, to whom and how many people, agencies and firms get this request for proposal?
I believe we're on the plat review for Quick Trip. Pam, is your question in regards to the Quick Trip plat review?
Oh, no, excuse me. I, I'm, I skipped something. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Just to let, uh, you know, residents know down in that area in the fourth ward and fourth precinct, third precinct area, uh, things are gonna be moving this fall, this fall to next year, so, uh, uh, we better be ready and just have patience because things are going to be happening. So, thank you.
Good point. Thank you, George. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Okay, tonight we'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight, as you know, we have a little different format here, a little different print on our opening page with recommendations, and I like the idea of using both sides of the paper when we can. Uh, I guess I'm starting to wonder, why did we not do that years ago? That's a, a, a very, very, very good idea. So, and also I want to send out a thank you to, uh, Brian De Frang for his work on, uh, and whoever assisted Brian, uh, with securing funds for the ADA ramps on Broadway. Uh, it's gonna be, uh, you know, that was one of the big things on Broadway, ADA ramps, and, uh, he was able to secure that funding. And now the engineering funds that were spent on that, maybe the manager can answer. Uh, part of that engineering fee that already was spent, that, part of that was for the engineering of these ADA ramps. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor and council, that is correct.
Okay, so, so that money, uh, went to very, very good use, but a big thank you to ever, uh, worked on that project securing those funds. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander.
George stole my lines. I was gonna talk about the new agenda. Um, also thanking Brian for his diligent work on securing funds for our city. And then just a small request, if at all possible. Um, I personally, um, would prefer if our pre-council meetings started earlier, I'd rather have a break in between the, the pre-council and, and the council meeting itself if we have to, because we, we seem to frequently e- end up asking more questions than I think is planned, and we go over and we don't really have the time to, to ask all the questions we would like, and maybe I'm alone in that, but I would rather start at 5:30 or even earlier, and then, you know, if we take that break in the middle because we have extra time, fine. But I'd rather get all that information out in these pre-councils so that when we move forward, we have the information we need to make a good decision. I, I felt like specifically with the car wash, there would have been more things I would have asked or, um, would wanted to have heard about if at all possible. And I know it's difficult because we're trying to plan these around Zoom, and I think when we're in person, it, it moves a little bit more smoothly. Just a personal request, if it's at all possible, for staff to look at that. I just would, I'd rather, um, spend a little bit more time than, than, I mean, I'll call Carlos tomorrow with my questions, but maybe we all would have benefited from hearing each other's thoughts and comments in a, in a format like this. That's just my piece, but thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Councilmember Idan.
Yes. Okay, oh, this is, as it turns out, this is pothole season. Every, every year about this time, I do receive inquiries as to when people think they're, when, when their alleys are going to be repaired, and this year it's mine, mine is included. Uh, I have talked to Brian De Frang about this, and I want everyone to know that, that they're on it, that it's on the schedule, and pothole repair has begun.
Very good. Thanks, Pam. Councilmember Moller.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I actually, um, have been thinking about something that I wanted to share tonight, so I hope that you'll all humor me for just a couple minutes. I'm gonna pull a little bit of a George and give a little bit of a story. Um, but I've, uh, been thinking a lot about, um, this week about uh, our culture of Minnesota nice that we have in our state and in our city, and I think it's a popular phrase that often is used to describe sort of the ethos of the people in our state, but you know, the longer I live here and the longer I'm in this community specifically, um, the more I realize what a vast gulf of difference there is between niceness and kindness. And especially the last week, I've been, I, I've been losing sleep over this because I think about niceness, and it means being polite, and it might mean saying please and thank you, or following a dress code, or being punctual, or knowing your table manners. Um, it takes a little bit of forethought, but for the most part, it's merely a function of social conditioning. It doesn't actually ask anything of us. Um, it's, it's something you're taught to do at your grandparents' house and when you meet people. Um, but it's not actually something that acknowledges the humanity of other people around you. Um, kindness is very different than that. It means that we consider, um, what uh, might be affecting the way another person has gone through, what they've lived through before, before we meet them, and we think critically about what it's like to be in their shoes. And it does ask that we do a little work, um, on our parts. Um, and I think about it, I've been thinking about it because there's a phrase that I hear a lot in Winona, and in spite of the, um, because of the, the recent events that have been happening in our state, um, it's, I, I, I can't get it out of my head, and it's, um, something I heard a colleague say, and that was, they were talking about some people in our community, and they said, "People from Chicago do this." And I thought, oh, that's a weird phrase. I haven't heard that before. I'm, my family's from Chicago, and so I, I said, "What do you mean?" And they said, "Well, you know, people from Chicago." And I was like, "What are you talking about?" And I, I finally, I heard it often enough, and then I thought, and then I said, "Do, do you mean black people?" And, and they kind of got uncomfortable, and I thought, "Well, if that's what you mean, why don't you just say that?" And I realized that they were saying that because they were trying to be nice, and they were trying to be polite. But what they were saying was extremely rude, and it was extremely judgmental, and they were making a broad statement about a group of people that they had not actually spent any time with. Um, and it's a group of, there are a wide variety of people in our community, but we know that people of color and black people in our community are in the minority, and quite often are pushed to the edges of our community, and so it's very easy to make statements about what people are like without actually spending any time with them. And so, what, all that I would ask for our community is to, uh, approach people with kindness instead of niceness. If you're going to say something rude, don't waste our time by being nice and by being polite. Just say it so that we know what you're about. And if you don't want to say that, try to be kind. Try to recognize that all of our community members have humanity, and that a lot of our m- community members are especially hurting now, um, more than ever, and we need to be supportive of them. So, thank you for allowing me some extra time.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you for the poignant words, and I think we can all agree kindness changes everything. Councilmember Young.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for, for just a minute. I recently took a spring walk, uh, with, uh, an acquaintance. My wife and I did with, uh, um, uh, and, and this, this acquaintance, uh, is in a wheelchair, and she was, uh, explaining to me and demonstrating to me how challenging it is. And this wa- this was eye-opening to me. Um, I, I told her that this was a, a blind spot, uh, to me, and, uh, she helped me understand how truly challenging it is to get that wheelchair. This is somebody that's maybe, maybe forty years old. I guess I'm, I'm judging her. I didn't ask her her age. And, uh, um, the muscles that you have to use to get up over that lip, even on, on an, an ADA, uh, 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 compliant wheelchair cut, and many of these cuts in our city are old or sunken or cracked or broken. And, uh, so, so this dovetails right in with the, uh, the, the delight, uh, that I, I have that we're, we're able to redo the, uh, the section of Broadway there and, and bring that into compliance. But, uh, I'm sure it was eye-opening to me, and, uh, glad we're able to do that and hope that we can do some more, so.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Thank you for that. Councilmember Rapinski.
Uh, nothing at this time, Mayor.
Okay, very good. I did forget one thing earlier in my comments. Tomorrow, we've got Fern Gertler turning one hundred years old. So I'm gonna go over there tomorrow and present her a little plaque for that, but here's the fern. Good job. All right.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items. Approval of the minutes from April fifth and a claim against the city by Steve Jordy.
George moves to approve the consent agenda.
Michelle will second.
Motion by George, second by Michelle. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Moller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I am Michelle Alexander, make a motion to adjourn.
George will second that.
We have a motion by Michelle, a second by George. Vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.